I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. McKee here.
Freejuk here.
Dan Verenkamp here.
And Councilor Lanterman should be here in the next few minutes. And then Councilor Nichols will not be here tonight. He is, I believe, out of town. If you'd like to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda approval. Looks like we have a couple of things from staff. I have six C being added, eleven A, the closed session being removed, and six K being modified, which we had the printed version on the dais. Anything else? Anything from council? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move, Verenkamp.
Give us a second.
One second.
Perfect. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, presentations, we don't have any. Open forum. So Nalisha will walk us through, and then we have a few cards and a couple I might suggest maybe speak at a different part of the agenda if they're on an agenda item, but we can get into that after.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this is the opportu-- and, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, this is the opportunity where you can step forward and speak to the council about something not on the agenda. Council will receive your feedback, and it will not be a dialogue at this time. Mr. Mayor, we have two cards at this time. And the first, you have two more?
Yes.
But those are for different sections?
Um, one might be.
Okay. We have more than two cards. The first person I'd like to invite to the microphone, please state your name and address. We have Melissa Solberg.
And Mark's here for the record.
Good evening, council. My name is Melissa Solberg. My address is two seven one one five Caravan Drive, Rogers. However, I own land off of County Road thirty in Corcoran, Adderall, yet to be assigned. You want to see?
Yes, please do.
So, I am here today to ask for your help and bring some attention to the difficulty I've been having in using our land. I was born and raised in Rogers, and my husband and I have always dreamed of building on acreage in this area. And we purchased land for the family back in two thousand twenty-three. It is the Sherber Morning Star Dairy Farm land. And we have a portion of it, and we would like to build one single family house on it. Unfortunately, the process has been very frustrating. We cannot seem to decipher where the goalposts are with what the city would like us to do. We have, twice now, every four months, the requirements are changing. And we're, in between that time, we go to, we've hired Paul Otto to be our engineer, and we've done the work, and then we come to a meeting and everything has changed. One example that I'll say really quickly, just to give some information, is when we submitted our application, they said they would like an easement road north and south along the entire border of the property. We pushed back because that road would go through a wetland, and two people's houses would have to be torn down. I was not going to have my name associated with that. When we pushed back at the meeting in November, they surprised us and said they would now like the easement to go east-west. As you can imagine, it's very frustrating to not know what the actual end result is that the city wants when they can turn a road ninety degrees on a whim and add anything. And then, in fact, I was sent to bill for their time to change the alliance. And I am asking separately for an accounting of how that time was spent using up my money. So, in summary, I'm not feeling very welcome. I would love to build a house here. We have family here supporting us. We want to keep the farm going. They will use our land to continue to farm, and we just want to build one house in the middle, not in a wetland, away from County Road thirty, so the rest of it can be farmed. And we would like your help, maybe looking into the process and why we can't get approval. And the reason why we can't get approval is the goalposts keep changing. And thank you for your consideration. I'll be happy to come back anytime and talk to anybody about this.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. So, I believe I saw the second one. It's Jason.
Yeah.
I think that one might be better on the agenda item. Is it, Jason, is it on?
Seven B.
Seven B? So I'll do a, like, a public comment opportunity for planning items at seven, and if you want to come up then.
Sure.
Perfect. Sounds good. And then the next one, let's see here, James Sherber?
Good evening, council. My name is James Sherber. We're here, as Melissa spoke, as many of our panel members are as well, in support of their trying to obtain a building permit to get a home built on the property. I have a portion of the adjoining property and support. It's been two years just trying to even get them a permit. So, we're here to try and get some ideas out so that we can, so again, I have neighboring property, and we support their cause in getting it expedited.
Great. Thank you. And then the last one, I have a question. I'm sorry, I couldn't read your first name, but Schmidt is the last name? Oh, perfect. And you had that it's related to an agenda item, but you didn't have the agenda item?
It's for with Melissa.
Okay, perfect. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Quincy Schmidt. My name is Sherber, and so I'm with the Sherber Morning Star Dairy. My husband and I own the land that would be connected to the easement that they're working on, and that's what we farm as well. It's the family farm. It's just my husband, my dad, my mom and I, and we farm that land. The farm was started by my grandpa, and we'd love to keep it in the family. And so we're just concerned with the land usage, with the proposal of wanting the easement there, with concerns about keeping the farmland, keeping the family business kind of where we're at, where we've been at, where we'd love to be at. So we're just here to support Melissa and here to express our concerns about the easement and kind of moving it into the farmland that we used.
Great. Thank you so much.
And Quincy, could you state your address for the record?
Yes, two two six two two County Road ten, Rogers.
Okay, and is there anyone else that would like to come up for open forum?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Just real quick, I'll speak. If it's okay, I can sit here, I will, but I'll speak on the same kind of subject. Dean Verenkamp, ninety-three ten Bechtold Road, Rogers zip code, but live in Corcoran, and I believe the same for Quincy and such. Again, the zip codes are a little screwy out there. I'm the neighbor across the street from the Sherber farm, and they do a great job. It does seem hard to understand why it has taken so long when that's what they're wanting to do. So if there's something I could do as a neighbor and as a council member to help understand this more, I'd really like to be part of that. So, it seems to be a simple request, and it seems to have gotten extremely complicated. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. I think we have no one else for open forum? Okay, then we will move on to consent agenda, which consists of items. Let's see here, with the addition of six C, uh, six A through six K. Does anyone want to pull anything?
I'd like to pull six K.
Okay.
I'd like to pull six F.
F, okay. Okay. With those pulls, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items. Let's see here, A through E and G through J. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, give her a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, and then we'll go on to item K. Michelle?
Did you want to do F first?
No.
Is it okay? Okay. I just wanted to review, I had a couple of questions on the comp class study, and just wanted to make sure that we had thought through, in thinking about retention, that we only went out eight years, or the distance, or the, what am I trying to say? The length of time is eight years, that we would be able to, like, continue to give people increases.
Okay.
So we have our grades and then the steps. And so I just think it would be more beneficial to have more years, so people would be able to continue to, you wouldn't end at eight years before you would only receive COLA increases.
Okay.
And I know we can't change that now. I'm kind of just stating that for the record because we're sort of through the process already. But I think that's an important thing to review at some point in the future, since a lot of staff at Corcoran do tend to stay longer. There's a fair amount of staff that have been here at least ten years. And so they've already capped out at eight years. So I think that should be something that should be reviewed in the future.
Okay.
And then I think that there also needs to be a shorter process if a staff member has a question or disagrees with their reclassification.
Okay.
And again, we can't change that now because we're through the process, but I would like that to be included as part of the review if we do have a review of this at some point in the next year or two.
Okay.
Because I think waiting nine months to give an employee an answer kind of defeats the purpose of having or retaining.
Where's the nine months?
Um, it is under...
There's six months for the... And maybe we can find it after too.
Yeah.
But noted. Appreciate you bringing that up. Anything else on it?
Nope.
Okay. Sounds good. And if no one else has anything, then I will...
I'm sorry, I have one more thing.
Oh, yes.
I don't believe, based on what I read in the staff report, it appears that staff probably hasn't seen their job descriptions yet, and they won't see them until council approves this new comp classing study. And so I just wanted to make that clear too, because staff won't have an opportunity to see what their job descriptions are until after we've approved this tonight.
Is that accurate?
That is accurate. Department heads have reviewed all of the job descriptions. The initial job descriptions were worked on with the staff members. The final ones were approved by department heads. So, once the wage schedule is approved tonight, that new wage, wherever staff members have landed in the grade, that'll be added to their new job description for the review. And then that will come back to council for approval, so.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Anything else?
No.
Sounds good. I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item six K.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Verenkamp.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then Mark.
F. So F is the Rules of Decorum, and if you turn to the exhibit, paragraph, let's see, one, two, three, four, the fourth paragraph down, I'm very uncomfortable with. And it reads, "Should a member or members of the audience be identified as disorderly, the mayor or chairperson has the right to declare the meeting temporarily recessed and call for the removal of said persons from the premises." So, my concern is this. You know, we make decisions or we act in a way that will often disappoint the public. And I think that they have the right to come here and voice their concerns and to voice their frustrations. And we have a policy now that says that if someone is identified as disorderly, and I don't see the word disorderly defined here, but if someone is identified as disorderly, we're going to remove that person. And I think that that's wrong. And I think that if, you know, I think sometimes we need to listen to tough things. And I'll tell you what, I certainly will not be asking for the removal of anyone. And how is that going to happen? Are we going to have the police come in here and haul them out?
Yeah, it's certainly something that hasn't happened in my tenure here.
Then, then if we don't have time to handle their building permits, why do we have time to write a policy if we haven't had problems?
I think it was, this was just an update to, we did have a, we had a policy in place. This is an update to it. I don't know, Jake probably could speak better to what specific changes were made from the existing policy. From my understanding, it's a pretty similar policy to what many cities have, what our neighbors have. I don't know that there's anything that's kind of uniquely ours in it. I think that language really is just to, in the event that there's some disruption that is preventing the meeting from proceeding forward, that it would give the ability to be able to continue the meeting. Like I said, it's, that's, in my opinion, like, a big jump from someone being upset and voicing their opinion to doing something that gets you actually kicked out of the meeting.
Yeah, I get that, but if it hasn't been a problem, why are we spending time updating policies when we can't seem to get to a building permit?
Yeah, I think it was just an annual review that at some point was asked to, council asked Jake to do in the past, and he just followed up on it.
Thank you. I just wanted to go on the record. I'm very uncomfortable with that one paragraph.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lanterman, what paragraph were you on? I was...
I'm sorry, it's the...
...altitasking, and I lost track of what you were looking for.
It's the fourth paragraph down on the exhibit, and it begins, "Should a member..."
No, no, I read it.
Oh, okay.
What would you, what would you say to get the point across of that line of disorderly and such? You know what I'm saying? I'd rather do something that addresses all of our concerns also.
Well, my thing is, okay, if a fight breaks out, do we need a policy before we call the police? It's like, I don't understand why we need that paragraph. What's the purpose of that paragraph? Who is determining what's disorderly? Let's say if someone comes here and complains about, well, my building permit, you know, I've been waiting forever. And what if I take that personally, and I don't like that person? Can I just say, you're being disorderly, get out? Like, what defines disorderly?
I think that's why the language...
And who is the authority to enforce that?
I think that that's part of the reason why the language in there is that the city council or commission may vote to reinstate the individual. So typically, it's the chair in any type of meeting like this that has the discretion on making that determination. But the reason we have a provision to reinstate someone is, let's say, let's say, I was way out of line, and I called something that, you know what, that's disorderly, you're removed. That was, and I was way out of line by making that call. Then council could say, well, actually, we don't think so. We're going to vote to reinstate that person, and it essentially overrules me.
I, yeah, I get that. I just don't like the idea of having written policy that we're going to remove someone if we think that they're disorderly. If they are disorderly, have an officer come in and remove them. We don't need a policy for that. I just don't understand why we're spending time on something like this when we admittedly have not had problems, and we can't, can't get, can't get applications approved in a timely manner.
Right. I don't know how much time genuinely was put on it. I believe that language actually, or similar, was in our policy prior to this, I believe. Because I know we've had conversations about the council being able to vote to reinstate someone as far back as when Brad was here. John, do you have any input on, I mean, it's pretty standard language as far as I can tell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I think the section that you're referencing, I don't know that there's been any changes to that from the present policy. One suggestion might be, in light of the commentary, would be maybe to clarify. So after the word disorderly, you could clarify that, which disturbs the council's ability to conduct business. Clarify it that way.
No, I would be fine with that. But I also don't like having language saying, "We will remove someone from this room."
Yeah, I think it just kind of establishes for public benefit what the protocol would be. I mean, we may know that, we may, you know, may involve the police as we would need to, but this just sort of sets the ground rules in a semi-informal way. So I think it's appropriate to do it. It's, you can argue about how closely all of this would be followed, and obviously, it builds in a lot of discretion, as you mentioned. But I think maybe if we clarify what that threshold would be, maybe that solves the problem for now.
I'll make a motion to, can you restate that language that you added?
So, in the third paragraph under the general rules, fourth overall paragraph, first sentence, it says, "Should a member or members of the audience be identified as disorderly," we would add some language, "which disturbs the council's ability to conduct business."
I'll make a motion to add that in at that point in the paragraph, as stated by city attorney times.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Perfect.
Thank you.
And then the item itself is seven F. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item seven, or six F, excuse me, six F?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Verenkamp.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Good job, everyone.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just real quick, on the folks that talked, Melissa Solberg and those folks, we did not give a time on when we would get back to them on their questions and such. We didn't make any response back. I don't think they're sitting here to watch us the rest of the night, so.
Councilmember Verenkamp, would you like staff to respond to their requests right now, or?
We typically, open forums, not a dialog, so you can direct staff to, if you want, it's up to you to direct staff on how you'd like us to proceed on that.
Typically, I think we have them follow up after the meeting offline.
I just, they may be sitting here waiting for an answer, and we didn't say anything, so.
Just asking. Yeah, I think that's probably the most effective way and most productive so that you're not, you can actually put some time into the response and that, if that works for you all. I think that would be best if you could follow up with the applicants and hopefully can get on the same page and start working forward with them.
Natalie and her team will get back to them.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Thanks, you guys.
Okay, then we will go on to, what's that? We'll go on to unfinished business, and we will add in a public comment opportunity here for our two planning items, which is seven A and seven B. And I believe we had one comment for seven B? Wanted to come up?
Jason Bartles, one nine seven nine five Hunter's Ridge. And I'm here on seven B, the lot there, the concept plan. Good evening to you, Mayor, Council, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here representing not only my property, but also on behalf of neighbors from Hunter's Ridge. So I have fans in the stands. Our property is directly across the street from this proposed development area. I've often spoke about concerns with development projects that have now surrounded our property. The concept of rural Corcoran, which drew us to buy and build in this area, has unfortunately become a fleeting memory. I guess my first impression of this proposal is, wow. It's shocking how a nine-lot concept has now exploded into twenty-two new lots. It makes no sense that only two lots comply with the RSF-1 current zone standard for lot area. Thank you to the staff, by the way, for calling that out in the packet of documentation. It appears once again that council's being asked to consider disregarding existing zoning codes for the sake of development, more population density for what was once rural Corcoran. More lots lead to more homes, more residents, more cars, and of course, more traffic. The last time I was here, I spoke about residents' concerns with traffic and safety, especially as they pertain to the intersection of one sixteen and Hunter's Ridge. Given the traffic levels the Hope Church project will create, along with the looming bellwether traffic, this proposal only makes what's going to be a dangerous situation worse, with the added traffic from so many new properties and vehicles, along with the water treatment plant traffic. As much as we are all tired of construction noise, we also have significant concerns about pending financial costs. Obviously, water and sewer will be brought to these new properties. None of those costs should be borne or shared by existing residents, as our properties will not be impacted or improved. The road itself has already been beaten down by construction equipment over time and intentionally neglected maintenance by the city. I previously shared pictures with council of excavators and steel track equipment tearing up the road surface. We need to be sure that current residents don't participate in any assessment for cost that will most likely be necessary after the equipment for this project further damages the road. The intangible costs of this project to existing residents are unfortunate at best, and very few of them can be controlled. The items that council can control are the adherence to existing lot standards and also the downstream financial costs previously mentioned. I ask that council hold the applicant to compliance with the current zoned lot size standards. The bellwether and Hope Church conglomerates already provide tremendous population density for this corner of Corcoran. I also request council ensure that existing residents do not wind up being financially penalized for any aspect of this project, be it water, sewer, road sidewalk, or any other changes that this will create. Thank you.
And I will just, wanted to add one thing, and we'll get into the discussion on it. It'll come up more, but I know one thing that will come up is the application as presented has a certain density. And one thing that I'm going, I'm sure the applicant is aware, but I will bring up is, met council's going to be voting on February twelfth about what their twenty-fifty plan densities are going to be. And right now, we have the potential option in certain areas to add under three units for some properties, which this would fall into as drafted. If they change it to four, that may no longer be an option for Corcoran. So, it's something to be aware of.
No, I appreciate that. And in the discussions we had, I mean, basis of the lot sizes as the current zoning stands, it's not a problem.
Right.
But if they get what they want, it's going to be a problem.
Right.
And we've already, we're already, you know, sorry, my opinion, but we're dense enough with bellwether and Hope Church, so.
Yep.
We don't need to...
Then it might come down to an issue of if it's possible to do, and that kind of gets that site specific of, can you get the, those lot widths as is on a four-unit minimum? And I don't know yet, but...
Just wanted to share our concern, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wanted to speak on these two? No? Okay, then we will start with seven A, which is A and A, or A plus A, Tree Landscape Concept Plan?
Sorry, my mouse is...
Oh, no worries.
There, I am, I mean, my mouse is... Hey, today, King's Fair. The first concept plan tonight, the applicant is A and A Tree Land, Tree and Landscape LLC. The location of the site that they would like to discuss is known as Outlot A of Karinimi Meadows. It's near the southwest corner of County Road eighteen and County Road ten. It wraps around the Public Works facility, and then Rush Creek runs along the east border of the site. The concept plan has a number of uses that they'd like to discuss. One of the, one of the primary uses being the yard waste, a yard waste recycling facility, parking and exterior storage for their business, and then leasing, parking and exterior storage to other businesses. On the concept plan, they're also showing space for a tree farm, potentially two buildings in the future, but at this time, there would be no permanent buildings proposed. There is a temporary gate booth that would be envisioned at the outset of the project. And in the southwest corner of the site, they have it marked for potentially as the future subdivision. So this is the concept plan. So this is the concept plan. I don't have a laser. So right now, they are proposing access to be just north of the Public Works building, or site, and going into a yard waste recycling facility here, and then parking and storage space here closer to the creek. The tree farm is located right about here. They have two potential building locations for, in the future, up here on the northwest portion of the site. And then down here, they have it noted for a potential future separate user in the southwest corner. The current land use designation for the site is rural ag residential, and it is currently zoned rural residential. The proposal would have to lead to a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide the area to rural service commercial and a rezoning to the rural commercial district. Currently, we should note, though, that the following uses are not allowed in the CR district. And so a zoning ordinance amendment would be required for the concept plan to move forward as is, to specifically allow a yard waste recycling facility, a parking lot and exterior storage without a principal structure, and then leasing, parking and exterior storage space to business owners that are not tenants of a building. And then this one, it's a little unclear. They said that there'd be a temporary gate booth. And then eventually, the idea is there would be either a code or a card to be able to pass the gate for users, so you wouldn't need the gate booth in the future. We do have an IUP process for a temporary structure that is not used for habitation, but it cannot exceed a period of one year. So it's just a little unclear if they would need more than that. So just something to keep in mind, that that might also lead to an adjustment. I will add that the Karinimi Meadows Outlot was, what is now the Outlot A of Karinimi Meadows, had been discussed for potential commercial development with Nate Karinimi as part of several concept plans he brought forward with Karinimi Meadows. At that time, the council was generally supportive of the idea of exploring commercial development on this property. Additionally, porta-potties are proposed prior to construction of a permanent building for facilities. No timelines provided as to when a permanent building is intended to be constructed, so they'd be there on a semi-permanent basis. The lot, as is, without any subdivision, does meet and exceed all of the district standards. The temporary gate booth location that was roughly proposed, it didn't really have an outline, just kind of a general area circled. It looks like that could comply with any setbacks that would be required. Currently, there are no standards in code to regulate the height and setback of stockpiles, specifically for a yard waste facility and otherwise. The narrative notes that the proposed wood recycling area is more than 300 feet away from residential properties, and the plan looks to comply with the impervious coverage maximum in the CR district. There is an additional overlay, though, because of the creek, the property, a lot of the property is within the shoreline overlay. That district has an impervious coverage limit of 25%, but in more data, it would be needed to confirm whether the proposal complies with this limit. There are large parking areas proposed within the shoreline overlay area, so that's something that we would need to evaluate if it moves forward.
The parking areas, you said?
Yes. Well, yeah, the parking areas are in the shoreline overlay.
Gotcha.
And it might be, might be a little bit of, it's all aggregate. But I don't have a great zoom in of the picture, but let's see here. The shoreline overlay, I believe, is this line right here. So it goes quite a bit into the property where they're proposing some aggregate to serve as their needs. So we just need to, so basically, the area that's in the shoreline overlay has a 25% limit that we would have to cover. Again, stockpiles are not regulated within the current shoreline overlay ordinance, so that's something that is up for discussion tonight. Exterior stor, and just to clarify, the stockpiles would be a necessity for a yard waste facility. And then exterior storage is one of the.
Although, sorry to interrupt, would we have the ability to potentially, if we were in favor of it, to put some guiding rules on size?
Yeah, that's why I'm calling it all. I think we would want to have, we'd want to consider that if we were to move forward. So for the exterior storage component, the concept plan and narrative appears to group in exterior storage with the labeled parking areas. City code has different standards for parking versus exterior storage. Other businesses are required to clearly define and delineate what space is to be used for parking versus storage. So some of the different standards that come into play is there is a higher level of screening required for exterior storage. So at this point, to comply with code, they would need to clearly define what is going to be exterior storage versus what is parking. And then keeping in mind that vehicles parked for more than 72 hours are considered storage. And so that gets to be a little complicated. Just knowing the seasonal nature of the applicant's landscaping business, it seems likely that vehicles in the winter could be stored for over 72 hours. So I think some guidance on how we'd want to treat that, is that part of the zoning ordinance amendment for this type of use? Or would they need to basically treat that as storage even though it's used as parking for nine months out of the year? But just understanding how we would want to treat that. Regarding the parking, parking minimums would need to be established for the proposed uses because they're not currently called out in code. So that'd be a part of the zoning ordinance amendment as well. Aggregate parking lot is proposed, so gravel parking lots can be approved in the CR district, but they have to meet a list of conditions, one of them being that the business operates only nine months of the year, no more. And the narrative provided by the applicant states that the parking area would be leased and operating year-round. So that's another area where we would need to discuss either a deviation from those standards or a zoning ordinance amendment. Landscaping would be required based on the perimeter of the site until a permanent building is proposed. And then a buffer yard class D would also be required on the east and south perimeters of the site. So that's our, that is the biggest buffer yard class that we have, so it's, depending on how many plantings they go with, I believe it ranges from 30 to 50 feet, if I remember correctly. And parking and storage areas also require screening, which typically is either a fence or landscaping or both. So location of fencing is not shown on the concept plan, but the narrative explains the site will be gated. Parking, it also says in the narrative that parking areas will have a fence of at least three feet tall, but could be as tall as 12 feet. And so just calling out that there is a 100-foot setback from county roads. And so that would apply to fences that are over four feet tall or have an opacity of more than 50%. That can be reduced to 60 feet with additional landscaping without a variance. And then fences over seven feet tall must meet all building setback requirements for the CR district. Access is one of the bigger concerns in the staff report from an engineering and Hennepin County perspective. So the concept plan proposes a paved access into the site just north of the Public Works access that exists today. The engineering memo states that the development shall provide a new public roadway north of the Public Works site and connect the Public Works site to the new roadway. This is consistent with the previous discussions held as part of the concept plan for Karinimi Meadows. And then Hennepin County also recommended in their memo that left and right turn lanes be a part of this project to accommodate anticipated traffic for the proposed uses. There also is a concern that the gate will lead to a queuing issue on County Road 19. So they want the gate pushed back as far back as possible. So again, that'd be something that we'd have to evaluate further. A circulation plan was requested by Public Safety and Hennepin County to understand how the site would work a bit further. And then it is unclear with what is currently provided, how access would be provided to the tree farm area in the northeast corner. So that would have to be part of that circulation plan. And then a second, access for the southwest corner of the site is subject to approval by Hennepin County. If it's not approved, it was noted in the staff report that the public roadway required for the northern access would need to be extended through the site to serve any subdivision. Another component is the noise from the proposed equipment can be loud and ongoing. The applicant's narrative states intention to utilize soft evergreen sheets to absorb noise. I'll get to a summary of the items discussed, but basically, I'm calling this out, is there additional strategies we would like to see in addition to landscaping to absorb noise? The trail, there is an existing trail easement that was established as part of Karinimi Meadows. It was field-located through the site, but has yet to be constructed, and that still is required to be constructed. There is significant tree removal anticipated with construction of the trail. And then the concept plan is just noted that it's not in the trail. The current location of the trail on the concept plan does not align with what we have in the easement. So for next steps for the applicant, should they decide to move forward? The, there'd be three land use applications. The first one would be a land use application for a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning to rural commercial, and a zoning ordinance amendment to add the proposed uses to the rural commercial. A second land use application for a preliminary plat, because it's an outlot, it has to be platted before it's buildable and developable. So before we can approve, basically, a site plan and a conditional use permit that needs to be turned into a buildable lot or a developable lot. So the preliminary plat, site plan, potentially a conditional use permit and interim use permit, depending on how a zoning ordinance amendment addresses the uses. And potentially a variance if there's an area where we just want to do a one-time deviation. And then the land use application for a final plat and watershed approval from there of the city-approved final grading and stormwater plans. So summary of discussion items for the council to consider. First question, really, is there support to re-guide and rezon the property to allow for commercial development? As I said, there was previous discussions that said there was a general openness, but we do have new council members. So we'd like to get a gauge on where we stand today with that. Second, is there support to amend the rural commercial to allow some or all of the proposed uses not currently allowed within the district? Specifically, the yard waste recycling facility and a parking lot without principal building. If so, it'd be helpful to get a gauge on whether we would allow that by right, or do we need to want a conditional use permit or interim use permit? Also, standards to consider for stockpiles and parking. And then also, are porta-potties acceptable on a semi-permanent basis? If so, are there any standards that we should apply for screening or things of that nature? Third, is the leasing of exterior storage and parking space for vehicles and equipment to other companies acceptable without other businesses being a tenant of a building on the site? For feedback on how to treat parking areas that may turn into storage areas during winter months? Is there support to deviate from the gravel parking lot standards to allow a year-round operation with an aggregate parking area? Feedback on the proposed noise mitigation strategies? And is there support to reopen discussions on the proposed trail location? So the recommendation is for council to provide as detailed feedback as possible to the applicant on the concept plan. The feedback is non-binding. While it's non-binding in nature, it is used by the applicant and staff to help guide the application as the proposed project moves forward.
Yeah, we might have you go back and forth through a few different slides depending on the question that's, any questions for Natalie to start?
Just real quick, originally, Natalie, everything they're asking for isn't the way this property is guided right now.
Correct.
Nothing is. So a complete rewrite of the way this property was guided.
I don't believe any of the uses are in any of our.
Okay.
Correct, yep. So currently, the property is guided and zoned for residential and agriculture. So that in itself would need to change, and then we'd also have to change the district uses to allow what's currently being proposed.
Thanks.
Anything else?
I'll make a quick comment. I do not support this. I think that it's the applicant's responsibility to submit a plan that conforms to city code, and it's not this council's role to rewrite city code to accommodate a single applicant. So just because this application does not conform, I will not support it.
Anyone else?
Just also, Mr. Mayor, with that, we had somebody interested with some type of concept plan re, essentially doing the same kind of stuff. And they were residents of the city.
Which part of it? The?
The recycling, composting and such of wood and those kind of things. And we, I believe, said no to that, and that was off the street of road in the southwest corner of town here. We had no support of that. Previous council member, Bottoma, was very much against composting and those kind of things. And I think it's something that I agree with Councilmember Bottoma previously, is we already have a compo site, and that's the Hennepin County site over by Target in Maple Grove. Not properly, how can I say it? The way I've deep-dived into this and such, it takes an enormous amount of work to make these kind of sites. Organic recycling, the decomposition of the wood and those kind of things create an odor that nobody wants to be around. Many of the neighbors are mentioning those same concerns and such. And again, the guide of this property and what we originally talked about with the three previous council mayor, council members. And again, Natalie brings up a good point. We've got two new council members on the dais here that we are in favor of changing this, but not into something like this. So I agree with Councilmember Lanterman in the same thing. I'm not in support of something like this.
Gotcha. Michelle, do it.
I agree. I wouldn't be in support of it either.
Gotcha. Anything else you wanted to add? I just wanted to make sure I wasn't cutting you off.
Oh, no. No, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I tend to agree with what the three of you had said. I, the recycling one, I know we had looked at a similar application elsewhere, and I think that's a fair point, that there wasn't support of it there, and it does raise its own issues. To me, that was the one that, I don't know if this is the site for it, but maybe in the right site, I could, I could see there's maybe a need for it or a, some desire for it in the community. Again, it's, it can be tricky. The other ones, the parking and storage use, I have a lot of concerns with that, just kind of, essentially seems to me like a paid or for lease, for rent lot for storage or for parking, which we don't allow anywhere in our code, if I'm stating that correct, I believe.
No, so the only similar thing I could find was Del Vazinsky, there is school buses that got approved to be able to park there, but they do have office space in their buildings, so that's, I think, where it's a little unusual to have the parking and the exterior storage without there being a building and without there being like tenants that have been gone through the site plan and been processed.
Gotcha. Okay, which is interesting, but kind of a limited. Are you with the applicant?
A little bit, yeah.
Would you like to speak?
When the time comes, I will.
Sure, come on up.
Evening, Council. Dan Creps, representing Aaron and Brad here with ANA Landscaping. I think what they're proposing is needed in the area. I think you guys mentioned that right now you're using Maple Grove, but that land right now is actually, you know, being listed as for sale or sold, and it's on the market to disappear. When that does disappear, there won't be a spot to bring, you know, some of the debris and do the recycling and do what is needed if there is a big storm or something comes through, so. That's about all I have. And as far as, you know, the outdoor storage, I think that could be scaled back. What the applicant maybe is looking for is more of just the recycling part of it. And I'm going to do it in a good, in a good manner and make sure that they're going to do the proper screening, and the smell's not going to be an issue because I think we are out in the country a little bit where there are some smells. And that's it, basically. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I would note that there is one more council member that, you know, could always reach out to individually who's not here tonight if you wanted to get his feedback, but I think kind of the consensus has been not in support of the application kind of as it is as a whole. If you wanted to potentially scale that back, and you know, sometimes it's easier to look at it at the totality of something without, if you're, if you're looking at just the one, the one use and retooling it, maybe it's worth taking another look. I'd leave that kind of up to your judgment based on the feedback. What's that? Oh, sure. Oh, sure.
So, uh, I hear you're, what you're saying, you're not a big... But the metro, the cities...
Can we get your name and address for the record?
Aaron Otman, um, based out of Rogers on a tree service and landscaping company.
Perfect.
I've been doing this for, since I was 12 years old. I've watched every place throughout the metro go through changes. Every disposal facility, every place, okay? Most times out of the year, you cannot find a place to get rid of material. It doesn't happen. Pig's eye goes underwater every year. Lenz Bush closes down. Maple Grove Yardways closes down. A lot of the places have raised their prices to the point where nobody can get rid of debris. But is that affect the clients, customers? Why? Because we have to charge them more. There isn't a place out in this area to get rid of anything. None. The closest place from here is gonna be Maple Grove. To go dump my chip truck at Maple Grove, just $280. And it's only an 18-yard truck. To go to, to go to Lenz Bush Rose Gardens, up 55 and 101. You wanna get rid of a gravel truck load there, it's almost $550 bucks. These places have ran the prices up because there is no place to do anything. There is no place to bring it. Three times out of the year, Lenz Bush Rose Garden shuts down. They're at capacity. Maple Grove turns people away because they're at capacity. There isn't many places left. There, it's dwindling. And if a major storm was to affect this area, say a storm came through and wiped out thousands of trees, where is all that gonna go? Are you gonna leave it sitting on every city street from here to Burnsville until you guys can find an acceptable disposal site? Because there isn't gonna be one. Just with normal tree work, we fill up every disposal site in metro. There isn't much left. Now, I know that, you know, you guys look at the plan and you guys see that there's some concerns with it. I can understand that. I get that. But all these companies that work in these areas too, they've been pushed out of every parking spot, every place they've been able to lease, every place they've been able to put their equipment and store anything to nowhere. There is no place left. These places are looking for options and they don't have them because no city will allow them anymore. Now, I get that. I understand that. But at the same time, we're talking about some trucks and equipment sitting on the backside of a property that nobody's gonna be able to see. There's trees, there's gonna be a fence, and it's a long ways from the main road. There isn't much for option. If I was to truck my equipment to all of my employees' houses every day just so that we had a way to move around and get equipment done and get things done, um, every city would be starting to write tickets. Because there's gonna be a 20-yard trucks with chippers and, you know, 100 feet of truck and trailer sitting on every side road. Nobody's gonna allow that either. There isn't a lot that has potential for options like this. I've read over a lot of what you guys are looking at here. I've read over this. Even Hennepin County is saying we're in need of this. So I don't know if there's another site you guys have in mind, but this is something we've been looking for for five years.
Okay.
And I know for a fact you're not gonna find this east of here. It'll never happen. If you're not grandfathered in, these same privileges don't come through.
Do you have other sites that you manage that are in the area of, of the same, similar use?
No, I do not.
Okay.
No. But I've been, so I've been in the tree and landscaping business since I was 12 years old.
Gotcha.
I've been to every site from here to Georgia to, I've been all over the place. Most of my life, I spent my younger years on the road doing tree work.
Gotcha.
I've traveled to major storms. You know, in Augusta, Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, you know, they're still trying to find places to put tree debris? Because there's no place to bring it. There's no place to process it. They don't have anybody. They're running into the same problems we're running into here. They're trying to get out of that.
Gotcha.
We have had big storms here. We have had lots of trees go down. Just last year, we had how many storms? I have customers that were calling me going, hey, we've got a tree on our house from five months ago. We haven't been able to get a hold of anybody. That's because some of these people can't go to work. There's no place to store anything. There's no place to put any debris. So residents are being stuck with debris on their house or debris on their garage or a whole tree on their house or a whole tree on their garage. Because there's nowhere to bring anything once we take it out of house. And they don't want it just left in the yard. I know that, you know, out here, there's farmland, there's, you know, manure being put in the fields. There's different chemicals being spread out, all sorts of stuff. There's already smells in this area. I'm not looking to, you know, say that there's not gonna be a little bit of smell from, from some mulch sitting on site. But, I mean, we're trying to mitigate it as much as we can with that. The parking in those situations, okay? Let's see, just, uh, down the way here is... What? Crane company down the way here. Um... Pardon me.
That's okay.
Set up since 5:00 AM. Midstate, midstate crane. They have in, they have parking. They park. They've got lots of big trucks. They're right on the main road, okay? They've been there a long time. And they've, you know, had that spot for a long time. I'm not looking to put a bunch of trucks and stuff right on the front street corner or anything like that. I picked the farthest section of the back property for the least amount of noise for the people on the other side of the creek. Now, this is to accommodate other tree services, other landscape businesses that don't have the luxuries of buying, you know, a $2 million piece of property to park their trucks on. A lot of these companies, smaller businesses, don't have these options. I've been in business for 15 years myself. I've struggled with it my entire life. Finding places to put equipment is not a feasible option. It's just not. There's a lot of things in here that I've made notes on, hang on over, but I literally just got this two days ago. We haven't had much time to review. I'm not looking to, you know, come in and take over an entire area with something that's not a usable, purposeful need. Even Hennepin County supports us because they know just by themselves the amount of ash trees that are coming down right now because of EAB. There's no place to put them. And the state doesn't allow you to drive them to specific sites because if you drive it outside of this quarantine zone, which people are doing right now. Okay, EAB is spreading faster than it's ever spread before because nobody can get rid of anything down here. So they drive out of the quarantine zone, empty their trucks. Well, guess what they bring with it? What happens when we get spotted and lanternfly here? It's on the move. Everybody thinks it's not gonna make it here. It is. It transports on every truck that leaves any one of them zones. Because there is not a single person out there that is gonna lay down under his truck and check every nook, crevice and cranny on that truck to make sure there is not a tiny white little pot this big that's carrying a spotted lanternfly. If those guys run up here, it's not just ash trees. It's every deciduous tree you can find.
Gotcha.
They're gonna eat everything. And they, so far, haven't found a very good way to handle them. The amount of insects that we deal with in trees, you know, a lot of people don't know about it. So these are things that are of high concern. And, you know, knowing this, I know this, everybody else in my industry knows this. I know you guys are, you know, not in my industry. But these are things that are gonna become in high demand. And if they run out, we're gonna be stuck.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How, how would you ensure that the insects that you're talking about wouldn't be on the product that would come into that facility?
You're already in the quarantine zones.
Okay.
So this, this area right here, if you drive up and down any of these commerc- any of these residential roads and you look around, you're gonna see ash trees that are dying dead. You're gonna find infestations from here, 20 miles that way, and all the way up past St. Michael now. Actually, the quarantine zone was just updated. I haven't looked at the new map, but I know it goes even farther than that now. You guys already have oak wilt. You guys already have Dutch elms disease. Not a huge concern with Dutch elms disease anymore. We have more Chinese elms and American elms that are a little more resistant now. But EAB, there isn't anything unless people start treating. And with the amount of forest around here, there is no treating every tree in this area.
But how do you get rid of the, when you bring that product in to recycle? Do they just die in there? Or do you have to burn them like with fire? Or like, how do you get rid of it so it doesn't just stay in that area?
So that's what the tub grinders are for.
Okay.
Okay, so the mulching, the mulching equipment that we're looking at is what's known as a shredder tub grinder, okay? Now, with, uh, like our regular chippers, okay? We have a cutting weight, cutting depth of about that much, okay? Now, EAB is this big, okay? And it's larvae form, it's very skinny, it's very squiggly, okay? It can still live for two years inside that tree. Here's the problem. Chippers don't take care of it. Tub grinders are, I think, last I read, 99% effective at crushing or killing most of the infestation in that tree. Okay? Now, that's a huge difference between taking a chip truck and dumping it on a piece of property somewhere. Or taking it to, you know, um, any, any other facility that doesn't do tub grinding, okay? They, they have piles sitting for a long time, okay? Now, that's not the end of the world, right? Because the gestation period of EAB is, well, it's almost a whole year. So it gives you time to take care of and deep, you know, get rid of this material at an abnormal rate. As it comes in, you're able to run it through the shredder tub grinder, you're able to take it and move it. And you're able to, well, at that point, then address it.
So turning it into mulch, it would sit for two years, make sure the, whatever is in it is dead to be sold or resold as? Or would you just get rid of that product then?
So it gets sold as is.
Okay.
It goes out, um, and that's what the tub grinder's for. So, uh, the big tub grinders, what they do is they'll actually mulch material down. And then they go through what's known as a shredder wheel where it takes and it grabs onto the fibers and it rips them, okay? Compressing and ripping them apart. Now, this is where you look at most of the killing happening of EAB.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I add a few points?
Uh, bri- briefly, uh, yep, perfect.
My name's Brad Otman. I'm an operator of Otman's Outdoors. I've been in the...
Can we get your address, please?
Sorry, what?
Can we get your address for the record?
Uh, I come out of Little Falls, Minnesota.
Perfect.
9207 Rose Haven Boulevard.
Thank you.
Um, I've been working in the city since I was about 13 years old doing tree work. I've traveled down here five, six, seven days a week most time. I've done the same thing as him, watching all the, all the disposal sites just disappear. Or the price is getting so high that we can't afford to dump. Or again, that price gets passed on to the consumer. We're not just looking at creating a wood chip recycling facility. We want other options out there. We take down large trees, large ash trees, large oak trees, large hickory trees that we would like to process into something else besides mulch. I've been watching this stuff get destroyed my entire life. When you take a three and a half foot diameter red oak tree down because it's got oak wilt and you bring it to a site and you dump it off and they just turn it into mulch, that's a waste. We're looking at having more of a green facility instead of just turning everything into a biomass debris that may, may have been ignored. We'd like to have a sawmill. We'd like to do some other things besides just destroying all of our resources. So it's not just the parking, it's not just the recycling facility. It's actually using the resources that our companies are taking down in our own backyards and being able to put them back to use. You can make cabinets, you can make furniture. There's so many things you can do with the wood that's being destroyed and just turned into mulch. And these are options that we'd like to try and make available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It's disappointing that none of that is in the presentation. It's disappointing none of your vision is in this, okay? It's also disappointing that none of you are local. You've spoken that hi- or Hennepin County is having issues. Have you addressed it with Hennepin County? I'm gonna put on my bottom of hat here. I am, we are not going to become a city of storage facilities. And I'm really not in favor of a compost site. You talk about farmers that have been here for a century. They've been doing the same thing they've been doing for a long, long time. That is out of the question as far as the smell that I'll regulate as long as I'm up here in the council. There's no comparison. Um, I live across from a very active family dairy farm. And they stir that slurry and that's the best smell I get. Neighbors will call me and ask me what I'm gonna do about it. I politely ask them to move out of town. It, it is, it, that is businesses. That is stuff like that. What you're wanting to introduce into our western side of our city is a tremendous amount of noise? I have ash trees that aren't affected. I have ash trees that I'm treating, I'm responsible for and such. And you're gonna introduce that much closer of these type of beetles and these type of things? I'm not gonna do that. I live a mile away. I don't wanna hear those kind of things. I don't wanna see something going up without a building, without a vision, without some investment that makes it so you're going to be there for a while, okay? I don't wanna fly-by-night thing coming in and all of a sudden we're having to figure out what to do with a pile of compost. We've got one of our public works persons sitting in the audience too. And I'm hoping I'm speaking, um, on their behalf too. Because they're going to be the neighbor of this. Like we said a while back, and again, the two new council members that are up here have spoken also, we were expecting this to become a development of a commercial type deal. And we're willing to make adjustments for that. But I don't wanna become a compost site. I don't wanna become a storage facility for everybody else in the Hennepin County area. I'd like to keep our rural side of things. That area is something that needs more planning, more things. I don't want parking lots, I don't want convenience for people. There are a number of tree companies that have spent the money then have places to store stuff and do things. If the investment is such that you're gonna have a building and a plan and those kind of things, I'd be more than happy to listen to that. But please don't compare to our farmers. We have an existing crane company that you spoke of that's been there for a very, very long time. Comparing yourselves to them, there's no comparison. Those are local people that have been here a long time and are grandfathered in. And there's no surprises. This would be a huge surprise to a lot of the neighbors out there. Huge, huge, huge surprise. So I've spoken enough. I don't think we need to spend a whole lot more time on it unless you, Mr. Mayor, and other council members would like to add.
I'm all set. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, and with that, I think we'll move on to item seven B.
Take your time.
Thanks, guys.
Take care.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, item 7B tonight is a, is the Loether subdivision concept plan, uh, City File 24 dash 037. Um, the applicants are Brian and Jackie Loether. They're requesting informal feedback on the subdivision concept plan at 10110 County Road 116. The site itself is 9.87 acres and is zoned Single Family Residential One or RSF1. Uh, in the 2040 plan, it is guided, uh, existing residential and is located within the first stage of the 2040 staging plan. The concept plan itself includes 22 single-family lots and one outlot. Uh, the applicants plan to retain the existing home within Lot 12 and the remaining 21 lots would be single-family villa lots. Uh, the minimum lot area proposed within the development is 0.19 acres and the minimum lot width proposed is 57 feet. Uh, the estimated net debt, estimated net density of the proposal is 2.83 units per acre. Um, and it proposes two accesses out of, um, the western edge of Hunter's Ridge. Examining some of the district standards, um, again, the property is currently zoned RSF1, which is, um, in the middle column of this table here. Um, the minimum lot, or the lot areas proposed with this development range between 8,200 square feet to about 39,000 square feet. So the minimum lot area in the RSF1 district is 20,000 square feet. And only two of the lots within the development would comply with that. And so a more comparable zoning district for what's being proposed would be the RSF3 district, which, uh, has a minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet. Um, and all of the proposed lots within the, uh, concept plan would comply with that standard. Uh, the minimum lot width of the RSF1 district is 100 feet. Four of the lots would comply with that. Whereas in the RSF3 district, um, it allows for narrower lot widths of 65 feet. And 19 of the lots would comply with that and it would just be, um, three non-compliant lots. Uh, the setbacks are a little bit difficult to measure this time as the applicants have provided building pad locations. Um, but looking at some of the setbacks from the major roadways, namely County Road 116, staff believes that there could be some conflicts with finding... staff believes that there could be some conflicts with finding suitable building locations. Um, I, I'd like to highlight, um, lot one especially, I, I have, uh, the graphic on the right there shows the, and the red line, it's kinda hard to see. I should've picked more distinct colors. The red line on the right is, um, of the one hundred foot setback from, uh, the front edge along one sixteen. And then the purple line is the sixty foot setback, which can be achieved through additional landscaping. Um, looking at lot one, it is pretty tight to try and fit, uh, a building pad there. And if applicants are able to explore that more and make it work, then we would encourage that. But, um, it's possible, they may have to request for a variance for that or, or try and pursue other options. Additionally, lot twelve, which is the existing homestead, um, that too is, um, a legal non-conforming structure. And it appears that, um, the, a variance would probably be needed for that as, um, the new lot would no longer have that legal protection of the non-conformity. Uh, the project itself, since it borders, um, different zoning districts, that would be required to, um, have a couple of different buffer yard class types. So the, the northwestern part of the project borders the water treatment facility site, which is zoned R S F one. If it, if this project were to be rezoned R S F three, then, um, the areas along the water treatment facility would have to have a A-class, uh, buffer yard. And then, um, the rest of the development that borders the urban reserve zoning district, which is to the north, east and south, would have to have a B-class, um, buffer yard. Uh, the density proposed with the, um, subdivision would be two point, uh, two point eight three units per acre. That's a typo in the, um, presentation. Uh, the site is currently guided existing residential, which, um, allows for a density of, uh, one, one unit per two acres or point five units per acre. Um, and the proposed density is closer to the conservation residential category, which is two to three units per acre. Um, and the council at, at the end may wanna provide some feedback on, um, potential support for a request to re-guide it to conservation residential. Streets and accesses, um, the proposal includes the installation of two streets with connections originating from Hunter's Ridge. Um, Street A on the west is a cul-de-sac that would serve, uh, five of the lots. And then Street B would be a dead-end street that serves the remainder lots. And, um, the water treatment facility would, um, change its access point from County Road one sixteen to this new road. Uh, staff recommends that these two streets be connected, um, to be in alignment with the goals of the northeast district plan. Uh, and additional, additionally, um, to better provide, um, uh, abiding cul-de-sacs, uh, to cause additional maintenance, um, with, with the underground utilities. So, um, staff prefers that, that be looped through to avoid that, um, additional hurdle. Uh, and public safety also, um, would prefer that these streets loop through to offer, uh, increased, uh, connectivity when they're, um, going out on emergency calls in the, into the neighborhood here. Uh, the design standards has, um, there's potential impacts to Hunter's Ridge with the construction and that would have to be studied further with a formal application as to, um, what upgrades may be needed, um, with this application. Um, but newly constructed local streets would have to comply with, um, the standards of the northeast district, uh, in the local streets in the graphic below. So just, uh, summary of the issues presented, um, with the application so far. Um, the proposal is closer aligned with R S F three than it is with R S F one. Um, and the current proposal still does face, um, a couple of challenges with that R S F three district, um, namely the lot width standards and, um, the minimum setbacks along County Road one sixteen. So, um, council may want to, during their discussion, they wanna provide some feedback on, uh, a rezoning request of R S F three or, um, with the non-compliant portions of the application, they may wanna provide some sort of feedback on a potential plan unit development application. Um, if the applicant were to proceed with that, um, council could discuss potential flexibilities that would be granted with that and, um, benefits that could come out of it that would, um, serve the neighborhood and the surrounding community. Uh, the proposed density would require a comprehensive plan amendment to conservation residential and the council, um, should also provide feedback on, uh, a request to re-guide it to, um, that conservation residential. Uh, and again, streets and access, staff recommends that the cul-de-sacs be reworked to form a looped street. So the next steps for the applicant, if they proceed, uh, with a formal application would be the preliminary application, uh, including a preliminary plat, a comprehensive plan amendment, and a rezone of the site, either through, uh, uh, either to a R S F three or to a, a plan unit development. If they go with a plan unit development, they would be required to, um, hold a neighborhood meeting and provide feedback from that and incorporate it in, in some form in their final application. Uh, and then the final application would be the final plat and final P U D if necessary. And then watershed approval of any city-approved final grading and stormwater plans. So, at this point, staff recommends that the city council review and discuss the concept plan and provide applicant with any formal comments. These comments are not binding, um, and they, uh, are advisory only.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, let's, uh, let's make sure we have no questions for Dwight first and then we'll toss it to you. Any questions for Dwight? Or Mark first and then you can.
Dwight, can you go back one slide? Okay, so you have option A, you have option B, where's option C? Option C would be the applicant resubmits a plan that conforms with the current city code, right? Okay, thanks.
Um, anything else?
Nope, nope.
Dean?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like that addition, another option. Um, I also wanted to just real quick address, if we can, the current residency in that neighborhood. If something were to change here from the current guiding and such, what repercussions do the neighbors have on their streets? Um, as we all know, there's already damage to those streets and I don't think we've done anything to it other than have said we can do a, it, it's entitled for a overlay right now. But with this, does this draw any, any more credence or any more things that are gonna make Hunter's Ridge hook to Bellwether Amberly on a road that we have, uh, done everything we can to preserve it to be a non-through road, which has been sometimes futile? Um, just, those are my questions for the current neighbors and we're talking, I believe, six property owners there. Um, can we address any of those comments that were made tonight about any costs that they're gonna have to burden? I'm, I would, I would not support anything going onto their, onto their properties and such. Um, the road, obviously, there needs to be many improvements done. Um, does this turn that into a through street once this all starts and goes on? Those are the questions I have. Dwight, you're shaking your head, so.
Um, so, just taking a step back, um, to Counselor Landerman's, um, point. Um, option C that was provided, um, unfortunately, if they were to proceed with the current, uh, guidance of the existing residential, they wouldn't be able to subdivide the property down any further. So, I guess that was, was omitted from these two options because then they wouldn't come through with an application. Um, so that's, that's where that's, the, the only two options that have been presented so far. Um, to Counselor Varancamp's point, um, the question of improving the road and what's included in that. I believe our engineers would have to examine it further just to understand what impacts are caused by the construction. And, uh, we would, um, obviously have that included within any sort of development contract to, um, be financially responsible for those improvements.
I can elaborate on that a little bit. So I think there was a comment, uh, related to the cost related to sewer and water, that would all be on the developer. So there would be any costs, so does the sewer and water. Any of the construction within the site is all the developer. We would analyze any impacts to the road, uh, as part of the preliminary plat, that's a standard practice for us. Um, so that's kind of the, the immediate impacts. We still have actually kind of a paused feasibility study that was approved by council a couple of years. I'd have to look back at the dates, but probably eighteen months ago now. And that is active and it's part of looking at what we need to do with the rest of Hunter's Road. We still have, uh, intersection improvements to be built next spring, both with Hope, from the Hope development and the original Bellwether development. So we just have a lot of moving parts, so that's just kind of been paused. We still have to deal with it, they're eligible for one free overlay, they're on the list, that's in your assessment policy. So, a lot of spinning plates. As, you know, part of that conversation, that feasibility study is, it will, you know, what's the highest and best value for the remainder of Hunter's Place? And I'm speaking of between one sixteen and the Bellwether development. What's the best value? We would present that to you and any options to you for you to decide. I think at that point, you can make your, use your discretion. There would be pub, formal public hearings in the four twenty-nine process. They could make their case, you could hear their case and whether you would consider any assessments. Our assessment policy currently, if it's more, if it's really an overlay or above, you know, not a seal coat, not a reclamate, if it's an overlay or above, if you're not on the free overlay list, our current policy says that you would be up for consideration of assessment. Again, that's down the road and we bring that back, but that's when we decide the ultimate decision on whether there's assessment. So, um, I'll pause and, and kinda leave it there if you have follow-up questions, I'd be happy to take in.
Just real quick, I'm sorry, I keep stepping on.
Yeah, it's okay.
You sure? All right, the only que- the, the biggest question that sticks out, we have done nothing to repair the road from the, the trees that have been cut down and those kind of things to take care of the easement for the sewer and water. Is that correct? I mean, there was a significant amount of damage to that road.
Uh, I mean, we've got a lot of documentation of what's happened out there over the last seven years or six years. So we could have all that data, uh, it gets documented, uh, in applied, appropriate contracts as applicable. Um, but we haven't done anything to some of, I don't know exactly which one you're referencing.
The, 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 when we had to bury the, the sewer and water east and such, there is a significant amount of damage from metal cleated excavators, whatever was used to do all of that, uh, clearing and those kind of things to the road. And I don't think we've done anything to correct that as a city right now. Is that all anticipation of something going to happen? Those kind of things shouldn't be put back the way it was? I mean, it was a pretty decent road up until that kind of traffic that went on.
It is documented and that, there's different layers on there, I think there was a fi- I mean, I have to, I'm not prepared for this conversation. So we can step, I'm trying to give you some context, but, uh, you know, if you have specific questions, we can go through it. But a lot of times on those roads, if it was a seal coat, what you see scraped off is the seal coat. So whatever we would do in terms of an overlay, like a free overlay, or if we reclaimed and did something greater.
Yeah, there were some pretty detailed ones there.
That kind of is, I don't wanna say not as important, but it becomes less of a conversation. So we've documented, we've tied it to the contract.
All burdened to the contract and everything.
We have options, but I think why it's been paused is it's so many moving pieces. It would be a worst-case scenario if we had moved forward with a free overlay and then we have all these impacts happening.
I agree, it's just questions I'm getting from the neighbors.
Yeah, fair questions, absolutely fair questions.
Of when and we should figure out a way to answer those questions, so, thank you, Kevin, very much.
Sure.
I'll shut up now, Michelle.
Okay, thank you. I, I kinda have a question along the same lines with the road. Um, is this road at the same level as like one of our newer developments?
Which road?
Hunter's.
At the same level?
Yeah, like is it?
Honestly, I don't know, with, as part of the process, we would do soil, we would do, uh, geotechnical work that would establish it. It's unlikely that it's at the same standard as our, as our newer ones.
Because, because it's a development that's going in there, could we require the developer to bring it up to the standards of what our other roads are and other developments?
We evaluate the nexus of the developments and that gets determined through that process. So I couldn't speak to it today without doing the, uh, study.
It would depend on the specifics of the development and what that nexus comes to.
Okay, and then my other question is, is, um, in like comparing the setbacks from the road on the R S F three, um, how far are the setbacks in Tavera, right on the corner of one sixteen and Hackamore Road there? That new one that just went in, looks like it's five feet from the road, I know it's gotta be probably twenty-five feet.
That was a P U D.
That was a P U D, okay, and that, that would be an option here?
That would be an option, yeah.
Theoretically, I don't think that's what they're proposing.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I, I don't think we want to recreate that.
No.
No.
I don't think it's been very popular with anyone.
No, but that's why the R S F three would be a nice option, I think.
Right.
Cause it still allows for some setback, but not right on the road.
Mm-hmm.
I got you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Anything else?
Nope.
Did you wanna?
Yes, please. Good evening, Mayor, member of the council, uh, my name's Josh McCain. I'm a mentor group consultant for Brian and Jackie Loether. Um, they're not able to be here tonight because they've been going to Mexico. So I just wanted to make sure we're able to get through this process and try to get some feedback from council tonight. So, uh, Dwight did a great job, um, with his report. Very thorough. Um, unfortunately, the information I provided him had a little bit of error in, uh, in scale. And so some of the deviations that he was indicating that I, that our project might need, uh, you know, once I went to AutoCAD, realized the error, we, we don't have a lot of these dimensional deviations that are held in standard form. So, Councilmember Landerman, your point's valid, like, so the minimum to expect is that something is too out-coded in the city of Corcoran and we'd ask you a question of, hey, do you support me going to that code with that standard? Is a fair standard and something we will certainly, uh, be doing. Because I guess what I would say is, the whole goal of this concept was to provide a concept that was the minimum of, of density that the, that the council, we think that council would allow, frankly. Um, the mid, the minimum amount of density that, you know, the site could support from a financial feasibility standpoint. And while, while complying with the zoning code to avoid the need for a P U D, which I think, you know, is kind of checking a lot of the boxes in terms of fit the zoning code, don't ask for a whole bunch of deviations, et cetera, et cetera, so we get that. I think, uh, the caveat to this one that's, makes this actually a little bit unique, um, is that we've got a hundred-year-old farmhouse on it that we're not planning on moving or tearing down. And so if we're talking about, you know, deviations or, um, variance requests, I think it would be fair to be related to those structures so that we don't take a piece of history, you know, away from this site so that we can, you know, fit a zoning code that occurred after the, the house was even there. So I think that's the request tonight. And I just wanna go through a couple of the items that were also identified in the staff report to give you a little bit of clarity on what we have intended to provide tonight. So, could you actually go to the plan, Dwight? Thank you. I would just say, um, the idea, I mean, the, the bulk of these lots are, you know, bigger than anything that's on the market in Corcoran right now or certainly anything on the newer side in Corcoran, uh, from a new development. Um, as Dwight mentioned, you know, the smallest lot we're proposing is, you know, almost a, a fifth of an acre. Um, and certainly that's, um, at this current plan, which was, um, we're showing as twenty-two lots. But note that on the existing home lot, lot twelve, would be a potential subdivision of that lot to show up to twenty-three lots. And depending on what your math with is relative to, um, the net, net acreage after wetlands and buffers, et cetera. You know, the intent was to basically provide this as a three unit per acre development. If we can go into the conservation, um, got land use guidance from the Met Council, then that provides us, one, some flexibility to potentially save some initial trees. It pro- it provides some other flexibilities relative to off-site, you know, the, the road connections that the city's requesting and what may or may not be necessary for that. Um, there's a lot that that, that flexibility provides while still giving us an opportunity, um, you know, and almost a cap on that density of three units per acre. And so, I think, you know, that's what we'd be looking for today is just some feedback of, hey, is that appropriate? Does the city council align with that vision of trying to, you know, we recognize you have great homes on Hunter's Ridge, we get it. I can't build, or no one can build what's out there right now. Um, given, you know, the realities of a sewered lot within a musa in a plat that's gonna go to, to Henry County, it's just, it's not feasible. Um, and so what we're trying to do is the lightest possible touch we can, uh, while still, you know, affording the landowner with the ability to subdivide their property, knowing that nine point eight acres, uh, is a fairly large site in the city of Corcoran. A couple of other things, relative to the setback along once, one sixteen, uh, would be our intent to go with that sixty-foot setback. go with that 60-foot setback. The existing home, for example, is 80 feet from the existing right-of-way line, noting that there would be a 10-foot right-of-way dedication, and so you'd be at 70 feet off the right-of-way line to the existing home, which, as I'm mentioning, would require some sort of manner of flexibility for buffering in that location.
All right, where is that? Which lot was that, one?
Lot 12, I mean, really, lots 1, 2, 12, and 13 on this plan would need to be having that reduced setback with additional buffering that's afforded within the site itself. We would need to be adjusting the lot lines, as Dwight mentioned, we need to adjust the lot lines in order for that to happen, but just note that 100 foot off of 116 would impact Brian's home, Brian's garage, you know, it would impact existing structures, which is really kind of been, you know, a main reason for us needing the flexibility in the application as well. There's an emergency siren that was requested as a part of this project, to be cited on this project. I would like some discussion or some feedback as to why that might not be more appropriate on a city-owned land just to the north of this project.
Where is it?
There's not a site that's identified. Public Safety identified the need for an emergency siren in this area, which I think is wholly appropriate in terms of, you know, wanting to make sure everybody's safe. Now, whether or not it's a good idea for us to find a piece of land, you know, on this development, when this water treatment facility is just to our north, I would like some, maybe some input there. Same with the buffering to the water treatment facility, I completely understand it's part of the code. It does feel like the water treatment facility in person has its own buffering requirements. Given, you know, the adjacency, I think it's appropriate to at least, you know, let's talk about the need for a buffer there, or kind of how the city's proposing to buffer from Brian's house, not just the other way around. And then depending on the discussion relative to the Met Council density, you know, the desire to link these, you know, Street A up with that other cul-de-sac, I completely understand from a protection standpoint, however, what we're doing is creating a lot of additional street and actually losing lots in order to do it. And so I think that's a challenge from, you know, a feasibility standpoint, which is, I, once again, completely understand the planning aspects and even frankly, the engineering aspects of looking at back-to-back cul-de-sacs, but in this case, from a trying to hit, you know, trying to serve multiple masters here of like the Met Council, the city, you know, the market, all of these things, it's just trying to work out, you know, what is the most appropriate pathway here to kind of balance all this need? And so I would look for some feedback for you, from you tonight as well. I'm here to stand for questions, if you have any questions to what our intent was with this, I'm happy to, you know, provide some additional detail, and certainly we'll look forward to your feedback.
Any questions?
Really quick question, with the cul-de-sac now going to be in the back of that farmhouse property, would that eliminate their access to 116?
Yes, so that's, thank you. So one of the things that's unique about this plan is, one, the need to provide an access to the water treatment facility, because the water treatment facility, as I understand it, would also lose its access from 116, as well as the Loder home as is would lose their access from 116 with this plat. So what we're trying to do is, you know, we certainly need to snake a road through the site to serve the water treatment facility, it's just, how do we add additional, you know, in this scenario, is how do you add additional lots in that area, and that's really, you know, a cul-de-sac provides additional frontage, which allows us to have additional lots, that's kind of the straw string to break the people. What, also, I didn't mention it, but one of the things that we're looking at on this site, and unfortunately, there's an existing barn in this, you know, in the location where that cul-de-sac is right now.
My question, thank you for thinking about that old barn.
I would say, Brian has looked at that barn and trying to save and preserve that barn for, ever since I've known him. That is a prospect that is multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars, unfortunately, with just the state of the foundation and some other things. So what we're trying to do is work with some other folks that are looking to develop in Corcoran, potentially utilize the wood or the structure for, you know, alternative uses, whether it be the structure itself, or rebuilt, removed, or disassembled and put back together elsewhere, reuse the wood in some sort of certain municipal project, we're trying to get creative with what that would look like. And so, you know, TBD on what that would end up being, but that's our intent, is to try to get creative for that, because, you know, Brian's home is over 100 years old, you know, the barn is, I'm not sure exactly how old it is, but it's right up there.
Probably older than the house.
Probably older, yeah.
The barns were built first.
And, and so we recognize it's a piece of history as well, and certainly are not going to, you know, light it on fire and see what happens. It's really, you know, certainly a part of this as we move forwards to determine maybe how we use that, you know, creatively, you know.
Oh, I was just going to say, of the requests, I think, I don't want to speak for council, but I think, I can't think of the method maybe we'd do it offhand, but I think there would probably be a desire for council to try to find a way to help preserve the barn in with any application or with any development that did happen.
Preserve?
Or, I mean, to let you maintain the barn so it could be repurposed elsewhere, or if they wanted to keep it there, or give you, basically not require it be torn.
Yeah.
We don't want to see it go.
I always say, I'm working on it, and I feel like, I wish I could share more information in terms of what the real plan was, because I think you'd be pretty excited about it, but it's still something we're working on in terms of, you know, trying to figure out a very unique way to kind of use this and kind of display as a piece of Corcoran's history.
Cool.
We feel that it's super important.
Cool.
So why would you have to get rid of, or why do you have to put a lot there? I guess is my question.
Right now, when we were originally laying this out, there, we were not necessarily looking at a conservation, the conservation, sorry, conservation residential, thank you. Conservation residential guidance, it was more of a true, you know, single-family residential guidance, which starts at three units per acre on the net. And so this was laid out, if you divide 23 by, you know, 7.7, 23 by 7.77, it's three and change. So the idea was to hit that three minimum with, you know, or showing a future subdivision of, you know, Lot 12, to basically indicate to the Met Council, hey, it's not three units right now, but it has the capability to be, and it would basically fall within that realm. Now, what Dwight's report does a great job of is identifying a potential alternative option here, which is, you know, looking at a lower compliant density to get us between two and three, that is a couple of things, you know, it looks at, you know, if some of these lots get larger, we, you know, we have a lot of engineering work and a lot of labor to do in terms of what this looks like, maybe that pond needs to get a little bigger or shipped around, like, that flexibility would be something I think we'd find valuable, while still preserving what is our, the most we'd ever do, which is three units per acre in terms of the ability to do it. So if this council is okay with a conservation residential guidance, I think it's appropriate, and we can rework the plan and work with city staff to determine, you know, the appropriate access locations, how we can kind of meet a couple of these other comments held within our report. That would be the intent, anyway.
Like I was saying earlier, I'm generally supportive of that, as it, you know, is less density and less impact to the surrounding neighbors, my concern with it is just going to be what's going to happen with Met Council here in three weeks, two weeks, less than two weeks.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to speak to that, even if they, once they adopt the 2050 framework, we have a couple of years before we have to meet.
Do we?
Yeah, we would have a couple of years before, because the four units acre.
We do, but do we want to, we might just have to evaluate how much we're wanting to, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that that's a fair question and part of the evaluation, absolutely. But just so you know, it's not like when they adopt that framework.
Right, it's not suddenly impossible.
It's not immediately, everything has to come in a four, we have a couple of years to work through a plan and get something officially adopted.
If they changed it to four, it would, I'd maybe have a hesitancy that we'd want to evaluate some stuff first before moving forward on it, just because we don't know what, how big that impact changes our numbers.
Sure. And I think, so perfectly valid, I think for us then is, you know, trying to preserve a plan that's as close to three as possible, has a piece of, has the ability to give it three, so that you have some alternative to say, you know, hey, it's not this conservation designation, it's single-family, three is the current regulation for single-family, you know, it's a little bit, it's a more palatable situation. I really truly feel like we'd be in somewhere between 2.5 and three, no matter how we slice this, just how that would go.
Yeah, come on.
The question really ends up being is like, I think what you're getting at is trying to offset that density loss on this site. I think there might be some members of the audience that might say we already, you know, we're doing that across the street, but I can also understand where you're, in your position of saying, you know, Met Council might not look at it the same way. So I fully understand, you know, the kind of pros and cons you're trying to weigh on the density side.
For sure. So yeah, and that's one thing, the February 12th supposedly is the day that that is a decision is being made from what I hear on Met Council, so, and for the public, if you want to tune into a really fun meeting, Met Council Committee of the Whole, I believe, or it's just the Met Council General Meeting, February 12th, they'll be voting on whether or not it's three units per acre minimum or four units per acre minimum, and it should be a close vote, so we'll see.
With that, using the comments from a previous council member, why do we have to abide by the Met Council? We've never had that answered. What repercussions happen if we don't abide by the Met Council?
I don't have a good answer for you. I mean, there have been cases.
Yeah, there's a couple cities that have been sued by the Met Council and have lost for not being compliant.
And then they basically got taken over.